Also has that height bonus, and we are specifically recommending that the SF5 and SF6 don't have a height bonus.
Okay, I think, yeah, we're definitely open to looking at an SF5 or SF6 replacement that, and I don't know what the standards of that would be, but if there was a suggestion to look at some of the R4 provisions in that zone, we could take that into consideration.
Okay. Fellow residential commissioners, are you amenable to putting the, an antecedent of saying, "Consider creating for all these new zones"?
That's fine.
Yeah, okay, so we're just gonna ask you to consider creating it. So the next one is number 13, replacement zone for SF6. Create an equivalent to SF6 in our zones that utilizes a units per acre standard. Do not allow a height bonus, but do provide an affordable bonus for other entitlements that could produce onsite units on large lots. See intent, the suggested text is see intent and current SF6 entitlements. Could also map current SF5 to this zone, and I guess this will be the exception to the rule where we're saying, "Don't map it now." Right now, all SF5 and SF6 was mapped into RM1, which is a units per lot zone, which is not very compatible, since there's a lot of large sites with SF5 and SF6. And then it also starts to mix up kind of the intent and mechanisms. RM1, you know, bonuses, it goes high, SF5 and SF6. So the important intent note here is that we're not recommending height, because we think that this would be a good zone to have available to put, you know, mid-block on some R2 lots, and wouldn't look at a place that's the same height, same tent, things like that.
Is the suggested language part of the motion?
Let's go ahead and just strike it, because it's a little confusing.
Okay. Agreed.
Okay, great. Number 15, consider that the proposed LDC has a large minimum lot, I'm sorry, this is for the manufactured home lots. It's got a large minimum lot size, I think it's 90,000 square feet? Yeah, 90,000 square feet, that would make, and that would make some existing mobile home parks non-compliant. Please consider creating a new mobile home zone on a lot-size scale for existing mobile home parks that are on smaller lots. And we suggest that you could maybe rename this like MH1A, and the other one, or MH1B. The intent is important, so I'm gonna strike that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, a smaller, a smaller version of the, of the mobile manufactured home.
And we were specifically thinking about park versus lot.
Right.
That the existing one is a 90,000-square-foot park, and that it might be good to have a zone where you could even maybe rezone a R2 lot, if council and planning commission approved, that is small, but.
And I'd like to just kinda add, so there are like 7,000 and 10,000-square-foot MH-zoned lots out there right now, and what do you put them at? Because your current code, well, the draft code starts at 90,000 square foot, and they have a 7,000, 8,000-square-foot MH-zone property. So what do we do with those? And this is creating a zone to allow those to exist.
And the intent is to preserve some of the requirements to, for the park?
No.
The intent is very specifically to make sure that existing mobile home parks don't become non-compliant.
Mm-hmm.
But if you created a tool that could do that, you could use it on new stuff.
Well, I, I mean, the concern I have is, on a 7,000-square-foot MH-zone, or even 10,000 square foot, it's not a park. There's so many, so many regulations that are in your MH-zone thing that talks about as a park, how it actually operates. This is just a lot. You drive down the street, it looks like a lot, you know, it just looks like an R2 lot, but except it's MH-zoned, and we don't have a category to put a standard residential lot that's MH currently. We don't have a category. So what, what would you suggest for that? And that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, and so even though we now know that MH mobile homes, or manufactured homes, can be used in place of a, of a lot, I think the intent by talking about existing parks is, go look at what is on the ground now, and just have a tool that, all of a sudden, we're not making all of our, a lot of mobile home parks non-compliant.
Okay, that makes sense.
Number 16 is a version of MH, perhaps. Consider creating zones that provide tiny home alternatives in both park settings, as well as on lots, to enhance affordability with small footprint dwellings. And for suggested texts, we said this potentially could be two new zones, one park scale and one lot scale, perhaps with limits to steer use towards tiny homes. So this could also be like a community-first village-type thing, or it could be a bougie tiny home lot. But look at, look at creating a zone that, that would allow that sort of thing.
And we don't know the direct specifics of it, because it's quite new, but it's just, you know, it's, it's a new thing that we think we should have as in our toolkit.
Okay, and we do, in the draft code, have a new use called cohousing, which allows a separation of the, of a common area from the sleeping units, so it sounds like maybe something in that direction?
Maybe, I think we wanted to get the community-first model, but we also wanted to, you know, if somebody got planning commission and council approval, and they wanted to rezone a lot for R2 and have maybe six tiny homes on a 7,000-square-foot lot, that there actually be a zone that allows that, even if you don't have a common ownership or kitchen. So we're just suggesting that you take a look at that. That's something that we're seeing now, and.
Okay.
And we didn't see a place where that was legal under the current code, or under the draft code. Yeah, I think cohousing is in that direction, but we can explore that more.
All right, is that all of them?
That's all of them.
7, 12, 13, 15, 16. Motion by Kenny, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Seager. All right, questions? Commissioner Zar, then, Thompson?
So I have a mix of questions for different folks. I'll start off with asking the working group, did you all, I think 16 kind of gets at it, but did you all look at the minimum lot size requirement of 4,500 for manufactured homes?
I think that's per unit, and you're not talking about the lot size.
No, I'm sorry, I meant per unit, so 4,500 square foot minimum.
I, I think we, in general, our overriding intent, and it's kinda stated here, is, please look at what's on the ground now, and make sure that we're not making stuff that's on the ground now non-compliant. So if that is a standard that makes a lot of stuff non-compliant, that's a standard that should be looked at.
And, and I did look into the requirements on manufactured homes, it also requires room to bring in the unit and take out the unit, so it's, it's not a typical thing that it gets, it just gets built. There actually has to be room for it to maneuver and get placed. So, I mean, I, I think that's why those limitations are there.
And, and we were aware that there's extensive state law on mobile home parks, and that's why we didn't get real specific on what to do.
That, that, that sounds helpful. And then I had questions for staff. Well, one is just a continuation of this. Where is that 4,500 square foot per unit requirement coming from? And the 90,000-foot, square foot lot requirement come from? Like where the, where do we, is that a model that exists out there? Where is that coming from?
Sorry, can you say that again?
The requirements currently, 90,000-square-foot lot requirement, and then 4,500-square-foot per unit requirement, or is that a model legislation? Where are we getting that from?
I can only say that it's in the current code, and I, I don't know the origination of that.
So when we were going through that whole discussion about the mobile home rezones, we had, we had talked a lot about those unit area requirements being absurd.
And if I remember, there were 5,000, so I think it's 5,000 in the current code, if I remember correctly.
And, and we should probably, we should probably call all of, I don't wanna use up all of your time, but we should probably call these mobile homes instead of manufactured homes.
And then my other question was, have we mapped MH anywhere where it currently does not exist today?
I do know that it is mapped on current properties that are zoned MH, and also the newly rezoned properties in the recent year that were rezoned to mobile home. I will have to double-check my, yeah, just to double-check to make sure that if there were properties that we identified as mobile home, I don't think we did, but I do wanna come back with an actual correct answer.
And so essentially, the process for that would be pretty much what we have today, like essentially, if somebody wants to make it, they would have to go through rezoning, get an MH, rezoning, and move forward with that.
Correct.
So I think the only reason I bring this up, and I know I'm gonna run out of time soon, I just wanna say, I feel like, I think I appreciate the working group's work on ensuring that manufactured home, homes are compliant, so we don't fall into non-compliance. But it seems kind of odd that we're essentially saying, whatever exists today, it can exist, but please don't build any new manufactured home in our city. And we already talked about how that's one of form of affordable housing that exists in our community, remains one of the more affordable ownership models that exists in the country, and yet we're saying, if you want to do that, we're gonna make you go through rezoning, somehow make it a little more harder.
Staff just clarified that manufactured homes are allowed on R2s.
But that's not a park, right? It's very different if you have to buy the lot, and we keep on talking about how expensive a lot is. Well, you can get an R2 lot, and you can do it, but the manufactured home park that might exist in some other forms. I guess I'm not saying anything beyond, I think it's something worth considering, and I really appreciate the work that their, for the residential working group has done, to make sure that at least everything that exists today is compliant. I would hope staff would also consider some way of figuring out, can we make this a form of housing that is more easily producible within our city?
And so, just to clarify, what I heard a minute ago with the, one of the amendments was to look at, was to look at making sure that sites today don't become non-conforming, non-compliant, but part of that discussion was that the size requirement today is very high, and so, maybe I didn't say it, but part of what I'm thinking is that we would look at possibly scalability of that, and maybe that wouldn't be mapped in new places on the, in the draft, but it could be in the code for future sites.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, Thompson, yeah?
So I'm just trying to be clear, so I think the, the mobile home use is the idea that it's a, a park that you, you pull mobile homes in and out of without disturbing the other homes, but for this one, with the manufactured home for tiny home sites, you could do a cottage court today, or, not today, but I mean, in this draft, you could do a cottage court and put casitas or some other manufactured home on them, you put them all on at one time, and then they have a much smaller footprint, much, much smaller site area. Is that correct?
As long as they meet the building code.
Right, okay, okay.
But tiny homes are frequently on wheels? You know, there's lots of different configurations for tiny homes, and I think we're suggesting, look at something that's flexible enough that it could allow different configurations, and the benefit of making it its own zone is that everybody knows kinda what they're getting into when they apply to zone a site like that.
Would that be an RV park? Because if it's on wheels, it comes and goes, but, but then we would want an RV-type zoning category that allows it to exist next to residential, so it's a little.
I think the intent is loose enough, like it becomes an RV park, then that's clearly not the same thing as like.
Right.
Community first, so I think that's why the content is broad enough to say, it's meant to be tiny homes.
Yeah.
You know?
Right, and that's why we did that, yeah.
And I'm sorry, I don't wanna take up your time, but I feel like one thing I was quickly was gonna mention was, there is, there was a conversation at one point that we had had, or I don't know if we had had, and I know other places have had, to say that a certain percentage can actually be RVs, because RVs also remain actually in a formidable form of homes for a lot of people. So we would say a certain percentage, but to your point, it shouldn't become an RV park, it should remain a manufactured home park, but there's a certain percentage that could be RVs, and it would still be considered a manufactured home.
Did you have another question, Commissioner Thompson?
No.
Okay, well, I'm gonna try to use up, use up some of your time.
Oh.
Did you have a response?
No, I, yeah.
Okay, let me, let me finish on this one. So there was a lot of discussion during Code Next about the definition of either an RV or, or a manufactured home on wheels, and I think some of that ties into this, but Donna, did you have a?
Sure, Donna Galati, Development Services. The city of Austin does not issue building permits for anything that's not permanently affixed to a foundation. So if it's on wheels, it's not getting a building permit, and, and so it would be different than what we can regulate in terms of.
So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a tiny home, it would be a mobile home?
Well, even regardless of the size, it has to be permanently affixed to a foundation in order for us to review and issue a building permit.
Now, the city of Leander has like a tiny home zone, so I think it's geared maybe a little bit more towards the building permits, and the electrical and the plumbing permits for hookups. I mean, I think there are dimensions to look at here, you might look at what Leander has, and, and I think the intent is broad enough that it's, would you consider it and look at it?
Yeah, we can take a look, and I can reach out to the building code review team.
Okay, Commissioner Shaw?
So just looking at this bundle, I just wanted to check with staff. I thought direction to council was try to reduce the number of zones we had, try to become more efficient and lower their use. So that's the first question, if I'm right. And secondly, the mapping strategy, wasn't it to upzone in transition areas, but in other areas, try to maintain, you know, the existing entitlement, well, map it with the most closest zoning that we, new zoning code that we have, to try, close to equivalency outside the transition areas. So those two questions, I'm just wondering, weren't those the goals of this code draft?
The first question, I think we got some broad direction from council about simplifying the code and reducing redundancies and things like that. I don't know if they spoke to the number of zones specifically, but that's certainly a part of it.
Okay.
And to your second question, yes, outside of the transition areas, and some of the higher opportunity missing middle, the direction was to apply generally a comparable zone. And to clarify Commissioner Zar's question, the mapping of mobile home zones is on property, are on properties that are currently zoned mobile home, whether they've been recently zoned to that, or have been that for a while, just for clarification.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Shaw, were you clarifying because of a certain amendment in this list?
Yes, I think there's some that are increasing the number of zones that we'll have, you know.
And the second question?
And the second question is, we have some of these that would be mapped, and would be, I feel like would be an upzoning to an R2, giving more units. So I think, I'm just, you know, it's, it's almost like broadening the transition zone in one of the, the R4. There's one here that talks about using outside of transition areas as a way, you know, to increase density, so I'm just, that would be mapped over in R2, it's increasing entitlements, so I think it is somewhat of an upzoning.
That one says to be mapped at a later date.
Okay.
Is there any over here that are asking to be mapped?
The one that we're asking to be mapped is the SF6, because we think it was incorrectly put in RM1, which is actually an upzone.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
So, so I guess that, so we are looking at that new zone in number 13 to be used in likely in transition areas, potentially?
So the interesting thing about SF6 that I figured out when I was doing the math is that SF6 is just a scaled version of SF3. If you do the units per acre math, it works out to two units per 7,000 square feet, which is exactly SF3. So I think the best way to think about an SF6 replacement is essentially a scaled version of R2.
So just to clarify, where would we use that? Because that was what I was interested.
So currently, SF6, all of SF6, or most of it, I think according to the equivalency table, was mapped into RM1, which actually gives it higher impervious cover and height, and on smaller lots, a lot higher units per acre, but there's a lot of SF6 on very large lots. And once you get out to a large lot scale, it's actually a downzone, because RM1 is capped absolutely at six or 10 under affordable housing bonus. So what we're suggesting is, is like, that's an upzone in terms of like height and density on small lots, but it's a downzone if you're on large lots. That doesn't work. SF6 is supposed to be just a scaled version of SF3, so let's remap it into something that's just like probably a scaled version of SF2, or of R2.
So in other words, it's being translated more accurately?
Correct.
Okay.
To match what's on the ground today.
Okay, so it's used as like to match currently zoned properties?
Okay, thank you. But we also suggested that there be an affordable configuration, because we've seen a lot of cases up here where we had, you know, an upzone, somebody wanted SF6, and there's a restrictive covenant where one or two of their units, they were able to make it work with affordable. So we suggested, well, maybe there's an affordable bonus kind of feature in here, because once you get onto those large lots with a lot of units, an affordable bonus becomes viable.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Speaking against?
Sorry, we, I'm sorry, we have questions?
Speaking for and against, I got lost.
No, you were the last que, I mean, there's more questions left, but there, no one's asking them.
All right.
Okay, so now we're in for and against, so Kenny spoke for. Is there anyone speaking against? Or neutral? Or speaking for? Okay, let's take a vote. So this is Kenny Seager, we're going 7, 12, 13, 15, and 16. And we added the word "consider" in front of most of these. All of them?
All.
All of them? All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, that motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we have three more categories here. Mapping, ADUs, and miscellaneous, and I guess I put miscellaneous first, so we'll start with that one. There's one consent item, and then there's, actually, there's two consent items. It's the first one, and then the last one in the section, numbers 17 and 27. So it jumps over some of those discussions. The first one is shade trees in transition zones, make walking to transit more pleasant, healthy, and increase tree, city tree canopy by requiring trees for sidewalks and transition zones, and the suggested text is to apply the front yard tree planting requirements to all urban or transition zones, R2B and up. Trees should be oriented towards shading sidewalks. Right now, only, I believe it's RM1 when tree planting kicks in?
That's where the landscaping requirements are.
Right, so that's where all of them kick in, and we're saying just that front yard tree planting, not all the landscaping requirements. Go ahead and apply that to R4, R3, and R2B, which are transition zones that when you're walking to transit, there are more trees and shading. And that would be an upgrading and broadening of requirements to plant trees versus today's code, whereas in today's code, you only have to plant trees if you're doing a huge suburban tract, if you're, if you're doing SF.
And I, I don't think we have landscaping staff to discuss that, so I would just say that we're not opposed, but we'll discuss it.
And just to be clear, it's just the front yard tree planting, not the general landscaping? Okay, great. And then the second one is parking reductions, and it says between, that's number 27 on the next page, between a quarter and a half mile from transit priority in our corridors, parking reduction should be context-sensitive based on the characteristic of the areas, not just whether a sidewalk exists, or if, or planned to exist. So transition zone work group handled zero to a quarter mile, and we were saying in those residential areas outside of the quarter to a half mile, some of those areas, I believe staff mapped for, to eliminate the parking requirement? Is that correct?
There's a reduction.
Or a reduction.
There's a table that shows.
Just to clarify, I think you're referring to the 50% reduction between quarter and a half mile?
Yes.
Yes. And we're suggesting that you look a little bit beyond just whether or not there's a sidewalk on the master plan there, but look at some more holistic elements. I don't know, Commissioner Shea, if you wanna elaborate there, that's all the intent text, but.
Well, I think it's all in, in that intent. I mean, council asked for context sensitivity, and so we just put a list of things to consider. There could be more as well, but rather than just saying, is there a sidewalk or not? I mean, there, there's a whole bunch of other factors that could be in there that should be considered. I mean, from some streets don't even have parking that's there, to size of the ride away, let's see, street width, present sidewalk, distance of public transportation, distance of schools, residence park, residential parking permits, fire safety compromises, lot width, driveway placement, trash pickup, utility placement, safe streets analysis, transportation safety improvements, improvements program, and vision zero. So basically, it's just consider more things than just one thing. Yeah.
Not opposed?
Okay. And actually, I forgot, we made a deal to be considerate of all of our time, since it's already 9:30, where 24 and 23 are now on the consent agenda. So adding to this bucket is front fence height limits, and it says, for private frontages, use the same fence regulations of.
I think, I think you said, I think 23. I think you, you, a couple of things were flipped, but.
Okay, yeah, okay, let me do 23 first, because it kinda references the other one. Simplify fences to not be allowed, simplify fences to be allowed, so those that are allowed, not, do not limit an intersection of driveways, alleys, to be built on the property line. Same front fence height regulations as today, however, limit fence, fence and front yard to an average of four foot six, to allow fences to be four to five feet tall. I believe the current height limit is six feet in current code, you can put a six-foot fence at the front fence line, and we are suggesting a cap of actually an average of four and a half feet. And that is the intent note, and I will just, as a sidebar, ask you to look at the issue of opacity of those fences as well, an ornamental fence under current code.
Yeah, we talked a little bit about the purpose of, if it's too transparent, we have dogs running up and barking, if it's too solid, it feels almost not very inviting, but, so there's, you know, there's considerations somewhere there, and we kinda went back and forth, finally, we're like, you know, we, we don't really need, I don't know, I mean, whether we regulate, how it's regulated, I don't know, but to consider those factors.
But that the front yard pool thing was a consideration.
Right, because planning commission had approved that swimming pools can be in the required front set, well, require, any required setbacks, and requirements for a pool is it's got a four-foot fence, and so if you consider that there are sloping lots, then current code allows for sloping, so it ends up being four, we said four to five feet, so we just said average of four and a half feet. And again, it's current code, I mean, the way that the draft code is written, majority of any visible fences you have, you see when you're driving around will be non-conforming, and I'd say majority of them. And so we'd like to kinda keep the spirit of where it was, but also bring it to be a little bit more neighborly.
Excuse me, yeah, we, we don't oppose those changes, and we've heard a lot about fence requirements and the changes to fence requirements, and are expecting to revisit those.
Yeah, I think James put it perfectly, like, we want it to be more neighborly while still allowing a frame of fence, a six-foot opaque fence at the lot line, or even a chain link, I would say, is, is not neighborly, but.
They're both extreme.
Four foot, something like that, you know? All right, and then number 24 is that whatever you do for the front yard fences, you should probably sync that up with the.
Private?
Private frontages.
Yeah.
So that if you have like a raised front porch, and then you have a railing on that porch.
It could be six feet at that point, and it doesn't talk about the quality of that fence. You could have a six-foot wall that somebody with private frontage could have right there at the street, and I don't think that's.
Yeah.
What we wanted on.
Because private frontage is gonna be two feet away, right?
Well, it could be two feet away, and it could be allowed to be 36 inches off the ground, which requires a handrail, a guardrail, or a wall, and at that point, you're six feet off the ground.
Yeah, so again, practical but neighborly.
Yeah.
I'd like to ask my fellow team members if on number 17, I just noticed that it's R2B, could we change that to R2A and up, to include the R2As with the street tree? The shade tree.
So the intent on the R2B was because the R2B is to be mapped closer to the walkable transition areas?
Right.
And hence more, more of that.
More shade on the sidewalk.
Right, but when you get to R2A, that's where you get the sea of, I mean, there's a lot of lots that no sidewalks, nothing, you're just in the middle of a bunch of residential, and to add that, I mean, that's why we ended up R2B.
R2B, okay, I thought we ended up at R2A, I.
Yeah, and Commissioner Kenny, that's, I understand, right?
Yeah. Yeah, our, our, our whole intent was, if these are the areas where we want people to be walking to transit, let's, let's get a bit more shade.
Yep.
Yeah, but there are R2A, a lot of R2A lots in the central core.
Yeah, maybe that'd be reconsidered. If you want to sponsor with me.
I'm losing control here, guys.
Okay, so can we just leave that? Leave it?
Commissioner Seager and I may come with a remap of R2B at a later date.
Okay, so.
Okay, can, can, motion by Kenny, who was seconding us?
Yes, oh, do we get a reaction? No.
Can I get a clarification on twenty-seven on the list to, to consider the items in that list other than the one that is the sidewalks?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, those, those are just notes. They're not even suggested texts.
Right.
Okay.
Those are things we've heard and things that we've kind of put together, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Kenny Seager, questions? Okay, I can start. So on seventeen, I would just, I would just caution you because there's a lot of competing priorities with Austin Energy and the ISMS they have along the frontage, and they have some additional restrictions that they placed recently on the heights of the trees. I would love to see some addition in here for staff consideration to make sure they look at that before we put this in a code that it's physically possible. But it's just, I'm just speaking right now, I'm not making an amendment. Let's see. Okay, those are all the questions I had. Any other questions, Commissioner Azar?
I actually had a question related to seventeen as well. So I think I appreciate the intent, and I think it makes a lot of sense. As I'm looking at the word requiring, I wanted to ask, and I think folks might know better than me, I just do not know, would there be an affordability impact related to this? Would there be a cost and thus an affordability impact or something like this?
Cost for the tree.
I'm sorry, what?
It would be a cost for the tree.
That's what I'm thinking, and I just don't know how much that would cost. Like, is this something that's significant, would drive up cost and things like that? I'm just trying to understand.
Right.
It's going to be less than putting in a required private frontage, but that's coming next.
No, they.
And also, I just want to point out that this is currently required for all multifamily. So any multifamily projects are already doing this. It's just the, the single, the residential scale zones that this would be extending it to, and not all the landscape requirements, just the trees.
It's just an enhancement you'll see later.
Fair enough.
I mean, there's folks in the audience, if you want to ask what kind of cost impact it has, if there's anyone who wants to respond.
That's actually a point, the staff respond to that essentially. I. Well, I, I guess, like, here, here's my question would be, and I'm sorry, requiring versus, oh, I don't know, some other word that's more incentivizing?
Two hundred dollars a tree.
No, it's more than that. I'm sorry, wait.
If you're Apple, probably can tell it.
A four-inch tree is about seven hundred fifty, eight hundred dollars.
But do we require four-inch trees in the front yard planning requirements?
Yeah, I think so.
I'm just try, I guess I'm trying to understand, I feel like if we're, and I think I totally agree with this intent, and I think it makes so much sense, I'm just trying to understand, we're asking folks to do onsite affordable units, at least that's my hope, that we're going to incentivize those as much as possible. Are we disincentivizing to other, some other means or not? But I think I'm fine with this as is.
Okay.
And I think I understand if it's required for multifamily, it makes sense. We're just sort of spreading it out.
Chair. I'd like to offer an amendment.
I beat you. I have an amendment for you. I like this a lot. I mean, I usually don't like things that do drive up the cost, and this does that a little bit, but gosh, this is such a great, we'd love for a rule like this to have been implemented forty years ago, right? So I want to do two things, and happy to have worked with language on you, but one, maybe include when not conflicting with utilities.
Yep.
And then another is, you know, we want to incentivize keeping small trees, and so I wonder if there's a way to include a credit for existing trees? I, I've, I've watched, I quite literally watched somebody go in, take out all the little trees, and then plant new trees at the end.
There is room for that at process, and we have some stuff about that generally applies to tree planting requirements across the city.
I think that might go here as well.
This just applies to our zones.
Sure, and, and all I'm saying is also just include a credit for existing trees? I mean, as long as you're sure we'll get to that somewhere, I don't know. It doesn't have to be here, but it just makes sense.
And it doesn't say, just by, just as requiring trees for sidewalks, except existing trees.
And ensure citywide tree requirements grant credit for existing trees, because I've heard that from other people.
I like that.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
So this is Anderson Kenny, questions?
I think we have staff looking to chime in, maybe? No?
I was just trying to understand, y'all were talking about the affordability of the requirement of the trees in the front yard?
No.
Uh, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Question?
Questions?
Do we need to vote on that?
Yes, we do. Can, can staff kind of respond to the increased complexity of, you know, getting building permits, or, you know, like, if, if the trees are involved, and if the, I, I guess the credit for existing trees and things like that are involved?
Hi. I'm sorry, can you repeat your question?
Just wanting to make sure that we're not, you know, creating a site plan that, that, you know, single-family homes have to, to work with here in, in terms of placement of the trees and, and extra things that they're going to have to be looking at.
No, I think that, I mean, that's something that a reviewer could, you know, could, could look at as long as, as long as the, as long as the, the specifics are, or I guess as long as it's not too prescriptive. So, you know, it would be easy to add a requirement that, you know, that, okay, there needs to be two trees. It gets more complicated when, you know, that can be done by a zoning reviewer. When, when the, when the regulation becomes more complicated prescribing types of trees, soil volume, that sort of thing, that's when the review creeps beyond just a simple, a zoning reviewer looking to see that there is a tree planting there versus having to add an environmental review specialist to the mix.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I have a question. So the intent of this is definitely not to have to require, to have to do a whole nother tree planting review plan, right? I mean, if, if, as Commissioner Anderson pointed out, there's already existing trees, and on my survey, I can show that I have an existing, I don't know, sixteen-inch pecan tree, you know, right on my property line next to the sidewalk, then someone can see, the reviewer can see it and let it go. And if I don't have it, I could pretty much just draw it and put it on versus having to hire a landscape architect just to say, here's my trees, right? The intent is to keep it simple, inexpensive. Is that correct? Because my concern is when it says, apply front yard tree planting requirements to all urban transition zones are to be enough. And then when we said it was going to be like the RM zones, which probably are going to require tree planting.
So we're still on the amendment?
Yep.
So let's, let's, let's finish the amendment. Any questions on the amendment? All we're doing is when not conflicting with utilities?
Yep.
And ensure city, citywide, we're granting credit for existing trees.
I'd like to offer an amendment to the amendment.
Okay.
That just says, consider a scaled down requirement and review process for our zones.
And instead of this when not conflicting?
No, in addition to.
In addition to this?
Yeah. So it just says if it's complex, you can scale it down. We want a simple process.
Are you replacing the amendment?
No, I'm just pending, pending to the end.
Adding it so we don't have to do it again.
Okay.
Okay.
So the amendment would read, when not, at the end, when not conflicting with utilities and ensure citywide tree requirements get credit for existing trees, period, consider a scaled down requirement and review process for our zones. Do I have a second?
Okay, second by Shea, Kenny Shea.
Staff understands the intent.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Questions? We're on the amendment to the amendment. Please don't do another one. Stacked on this. Okay. Alright. Speaking against? Alright, let's take a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Alright. That was amendment to the amendment, but it essentially passed the amendment too, but I'll just take a vote anyway. So Anderson Kenny. When not conflicting, blah, blah, blah. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay, so amendment passes. Now we're back to Kenny Seager. We have some spots for a couple more questions, if anyone's got any. This is, this is the entire set of amendments, though. Okay?
Set, right, not twenty-five.
Not twenty-five, that's correct. Seventeen, twenty-four, twenty-three, and twenty-seven.
So Chair, if we had an amendment to an item, would that be, would this be the time to do it?
Yes.
Okay, so I had something in my individual amendments that I think it, it, it is, fits right into one of these, so I think we can take care of it now. And it's in line with item twenty-seven, whereas we're calling out for this more special attention to between a quarter and a half mile. Similarly, you know, after looking at this, there are going to be certain neighborhoods that lack the street width within that first quarter mile. And so, in addition to the sidewalk criteria that are deemed as kind of what staff has deemed as meeting the council's kind of disruptive definition, where there's a lack of sidewalks, I would like to add inadequate street width is another disruptive factor. So that's where we have streets that do not allow for parked cars on each side and safe passage of two cars in that road, unless we want to turn them all to one-way streets or eliminate parking on one side.
So about two-thirds of the way down, there's a street width in the notes?
Yes, on, right, so.
Do you want to include it in the intent?
Wait, it, so.
All I'm doing is, I'm adding, okay, so amendment. So I'm saying within zero to a quarter mile.
Oh, you're adding the.
Ah, okay.
So that's what I'm amending. So I want to basically add that criteria for all, for all, because in the justification.
Chair, I would argue that this is not germane to the amendment, which specifically deals with quarter to a half mile.
Well, I'll argue that your justification, why wouldn't that also be justified for zero to a quarter mile? It's the same issues. They exist for that distance as well.
You can make an amendment. Sure. You can make an amendment if it's.
Can, can I ask a question? I, I guess I didn't, maybe I didn't quite understand the intent of twenty-seven was, was the intent to to reduce where you're actually allowing this parking reductions from where it is today, or was it to increase where you would allow parking reductions?
Just to consider them.
Generally reduces what it sounds like, but let me, let me, let me ask, let me grant courtesy to Commissioner Shaw to finish his amendment. So you're adding zero to quarter.
I'll make it simple. Let's just, instead of a quarter to a half, it's just, you know, two and a half miles.
Zero, within a half mile, it changes priority network.
Okay. Is that the only change?
Yeah, I'll just make it simple. I think those conditions that warrant more attention, context sensitivity, should be considered within that distance as well. I mean, I don't know why it would be any different.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second. You already spoken to it. Are there questions? We're amending twenty-seven, adding that zero to quarter. We're just saying within a half mile. No questions. Commissioner Azar?
So I have a question. What, and, and I guess I'm, this is hard because now we're looking at two things together, but really to the specific issue that you're raising, Commissioner Shaw, how does that impact current streets where that might already be an issue? So I'm thinking like do all beyond a certain point, if you're parked on both sides, which you currently allow, there's not enough space for two cars to pass in the middle, will certain streets become non-compliant? And does that mean we'll have to go in and somehow make them compliant? Like, what does this do to current streets where this is already an issue?
So the, I think what the concern is for this sensitivity is we're going to get more cars parked on the street, which will limit the functionality of those streets for things like trash pickup, or just, you know, a number of these areas. You know, we're looking at other conditions besides just sidewalks. So it just, what you're reading here is a more context-sensitive approach to making a decision whether or not to eliminate parking. Basically, within the area, we have either in the first quarter mile, a hundred percent reduction of onsite parking requirements. So, you know, worst case, all the cars go out in the street, and for a quarter mile to a half mile, they get a fifty percent reduction in parking.
And, yes.
I would say to, to directly answer your question, so in areas where it already has a problem, what this will try to do is to try not to make it even more of a problem.
Okay, Commissioner Azar, you need to ask a question about just this amendment, within.
And so I was essentially saying, and I think that was my question, I think I kind of get an answer, but I'm not sure that I completely get it, but essentially, within a quarter mile where this already exists, I'm hearing that this would not exacerbate it, where we're somehow saying that where this currently exists, it's okay, but let's not do this in the future. Well, what about places where it currently exists?
It's going to make it worse.
Well, where currently.
And I guess I'll have a follow-up question, which we say, I feel like I'm more open to seeing context-specific, like, I feel like this one says context-sensitive, it's more broad, makes an understanding. We're putting a very specific limitation that currently exists on a number of streets, so I think I'm a little uncomfortable with that language. I'm more open to looking at context-sensitive ways of looking at that.
So just to clarify, my amendment was to adopt this language in twenty-seven, but to just change the distance. That's all.
So you're not saying that the inadequate street width as language should be included in that amendment at all? Can you please restate your amendment?
It's, if you read what's here, is the intent under twenty-seven, it's just changing up to a half mile. So it's not the range of a quarter to a half, it's up to a half mile.
It just says between zero to one-half mile from transit, that's it.
Okay, that really helps, that really helps clarify, thank you.
Okay, other questions? Alright, speaking against? Go ahead.
Can I move to split this one? Take twenty-seven from the rest of the package.
Okay. Not necessarily, but I mean, it would accomplish the same thing. It might be a little bit faster, but if you're, if you want to, we can.
Not a split, I need amendment first.
Okay. Alright, speaking against? Commissioner Kenny?
Yeah, I mean, this, we all know that this would be a massive reduction in capacity by massively increasing the amount of parking required. That's what this really does. And I, I feel like this is in the same, I feel like when I, as I feel when people come up and say, don't approve this upzoning on the street because the street's not wide enough, but nobody ever suggests, so let's just take out parking on one side. What it's really in effect does is just kills the housing. And this, this would be a huge, huge impact on what has come up in the draft in terms of required parking, and thus, as we've seen in the data, the cost of housing and the amount of housing that gets built, it's, it's a, a small item that, that actually has dramatic impacts, and as, as Commissioner Azar has stated, there are tons of streets that are very narrow. I've lived on them in Austin, that have apartments, and people manage. So I, I don't think this is necessary, and is actually a, a kind of a huge bomb being put into this set of recommendations.
Speaking for?
So this is just on number twenty-seven, what?
Just on the amendment, but Commissioner Shaw?
I'm going to speak for it, part of it because under draft, under the previous draft, we talked so much about using TDM, traffic demand management. We even had a way to analyze each development, considering and working with the development on how they could actually reduce the number of parking spaces by having, you know, from rideshare to bike, you know, whatever, bike locker. you know, whatever, bike lockers, I mean, all those different things. And right now, we're talking about reductions based upon just because there's a sidewalk. Our previous conversations had much more context ideas, not just specific to the street areas, but even to the development itself. And right now, we don't even have any of it. We went completely the opposite way. So I'm supportive of this because we do talk about TDM-type analysis in this.
Speaking against?
I'm. I'm speaking, so. In my neighborhood, we, we've seen the, the, the population just, just crater in the single-family neighborhoods, the single-family area of my neighborhood. So where the, the apartments are, it sort of keeps the, the population level because they've built a lot of new apartments, but the single families have just cratered. As, you know, large families have moved into, you know, a, a couple of them, you know, just a couple of people in a, in a home or STRs. I have no parking for my house. There's, there's no parking for, you know, the majority of the houses on, on my street. The, the street isn't wide enough for two cars to go by. And you're just basically saying, no more houses can be built in that neighborhood, if, if that's the situation. You know, I'm, I, within a half block of a, a high-frequency bus line, it's the perfect place for some more neighbors, and I'm not going to get them any other way.
Speaking for? Commissioner Seager?
I'm speaking for this because we're asking to look at the context sensitivity of the street. Not all conditions will apply to every street. There's a, could be a mix of these conditions. And it's just saying, look at the conditions of the street. And there are many conditions that it could. It's not saying, don't build housing. It's not saying, we're not going to do any development. Just look at the context of the street before you make that being decisions.
Okay, last commissioner speaking against, Commissioner Anderson?
I'm strongly opposed to this one. So when I hear inadequate street widths, but then I realize the exact streets we're talking about are some of the most highly desirable areas in the city. And so much of that isn't just their location, but just the street width itself is highly desirable. You, you can't put up a speed limit sign that says, you know, a lower speed and expect people to go slower. You have to design for that. And that is what these lower, these smaller, narrower streets do for us. And just like Commissioner just said a minute ago, like, if this were truly, you know, the issue that, that someone say it is, then, then we could talk about getting rid of parking on one side, but versus getting rid of new homes. So definitely against this.
All right, so this is Shaw, Shea amendment. We've had three fours and three against. This is the amendment where we're adding scratching between quarter and a half and saying within a half mile from the Transit Priority Network corridors. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Five, six, all those against? One, two, three, four, five, six, abstaining? Okay, so that did not pass, six, six, one. All right, so now we're back to the original amendment.
I move, I move to split.
Same, second.
Split, okay. Are there any questions? Did you want to speak to yours?
Same thing, just further out.
Yeah, okay, all right. So we're splitting 27. Motion by Commissioner Thompson, second by Anderson. Any further discussion or speaking against? All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? All right, so that motion carries unanimously. We're back to the original motion. Seventeen, twenty-four, and twenty-three. I'm going to go to speaking against. Speaking for? Let's take a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay, so those pass unanimously. Now let's do 27. This is still a Kenny Seager amendment. Speaking against? Speaking for? Speaking neutral? Okay, so just as a reminder, this is number 27, as is. Between a quarter and a half mile from a Transit Priority Network corridor, parking reductions to be context-sensitive based on certain characteristics. All those in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, all those against? One, two, three, four, five. Okay, so that motion passes. Eight to, any abstaining? Eight to five? Did I do that wrong? I had five.
Yes, that's correct.
All right, it's getting late, I understand. All right.
Twenty-five.
Commissioner Shea, 25? Sure, Commissioner, ladies and gentlemen, extend time, please. Okay, so we're getting close to 10. I know we said 11, but we still have to extend time. Are we going to 11 or 11:30 or 12?
Eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty?
Second.
Okay. Seager, Anderson, all those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay.
I'm really opposed, but.
Howard almost opposed, and I would have agreed with him.
Jim Schisler always opposed.
Okay.
Okay, item 25 has to do with the whole concept of the creation of private frontage. This is required in R2B zones. The reason this was brought up was because of consideration of the affordability component of it. And the cost to create a private frontage, to me, is quite substantial because if we start having to create courts and raised areas and just you think about all the footings that are required just to create a private frontage, where there'd be like, you know, stone, brick, whatever that goes around the area, and then the surface that's required for it, I mean, it, it adds substantial costs to the, to development. So if anything that should require an affordability, an affordability impact statement, I think this should be considered. And so that's why I'm bringing this up. I think visually, I think, I appreciate staff bringing this to create that walkable look and the inviting look of it. But I do think we should really consider what this is going to add to the cost of a development. And that's why it was brought up.
Okay. Is there a second? Second by Seager. All right, staff?
So private frontages are required for R2B, R3, R4, and RM1. This was created for a multitude of reasons. The first, yes, it does create a walkable environment. It has a more inviting appeal for a house, but also for the R3, R4, and RM1 in particular, it helps them maintain their house scale. It creates more of a neighborhood context for these, you know, potentially slightly larger buildings. It also ensures that the buildings don't turn their side or rear to the front facade. It means that they must have some unit that faces the front. They have to acknowledge and recognize the front of the lot and actually engage with the neighborhood and the street. Without the private frontage requirement, they can turn their side to it and not, not engage in the same way a house would, which disrupts the neighborhood character, which is the whole point of the residential house scale. So we feel like the private frontage is really critical to maintaining that house scale, excuse me, house scale aesthetic. And so, and additionally, and we do recognize that it is, you know, an additional cost to the construction. So in reference to that, we did go through, and in the private frontage requirements, we significantly reduced the sizes that were required. And we removed some of the limiting factors, such as the furniture requirements and furniture placement requirements, and removed one of the walls on the attached engagement porch, which was one of your recommendations at the previous planning commission hearings. So we do recognize that the cost, but we have made efforts to reduce those costs. And we do support, you know, the garage placement, being able to come forward to create that engaged less of a construction, you don't have to build a new wall. But we do think that, as staff, we support maintaining them because we think it's important to the viability of the neighborhood.
And just to clarify, this is for our, what our, our amendment here is for R2B that we're talking about.
So R2B is always zoned right next to R3, R4, and RM1 to continue that, that reduced setback requirement. So R2B, having the private frontage is still important to match the styling and scale of the R4.
Okay, all right, questions? Commissioner Zar?
I have a question for staff. I feel like you've kind of partially answered this, but I think there are affordability requirements, like affordability impacts associated with something like this. Would the street trees try to get us to like similar articulation and similar streetscape elements without necessarily requiring a private frontage?
So the street trees are a nice aesthetic, and they do provide shade for the sidewalk, but they offer different amenities. One is about creating a building feature that actually engages the street and is really a design aesthetic for the building itself. And the street trees add a nice amenity for the front, but it's, they offer different purposes and they don't solve the same issue.
Thank you.
Other questions?
So I wanted, I mean, for, the importance for our working group was to bring it up because of the affordability issue. So I don't know, is, if, I mean, is, whether we pull it or not, I think I, I'm kind of more at, I'm kind of in the middle right now on whether I support it. I, I appreciate the reasons for it, and I agree with that. My only concern is the affordability of that. And that's why it was brought up, so as we felt it should have been discussed and brought up here at the planning commission.
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
If I eat into your time, please let me know. I'll be honest, I think with affordability requirements, I'm really thinking of the deeply affordable stuff. I'm thinking of things that we create under affordability unlocked, where there might be an impact. My hope would be that we did pass an amendment under the affordability working group requirements to say, offer administrative variances to developments under affordability unlocked. Essentially, deeply affordable housing that's created an affordability unlocked, providing administrative variance. I would hope that some of this would go in that to really ensure that we do not create costs essentially for those deeply affordable housing. And so we ensure that they remain affordable. So I would hope that some of that would be covered there, and I appreciate you bringing this up as something. So I appreciate the entire working group's work on this. Staff, do you want to respond?
Yes, I can, and we can look into the alternative equivalent compliance for affordability unlocked. I'm not, I'm not sure if that's covered in our AEC right now, but we can definitely look into that. And I'll also note that in reference to the affordability aspect, it's only required for the units that face the front. So at least one unit has to face the front. But we're not requiring porches for, if they have other units that don't necessarily face the front, private frontage is not required for those other units. So like in R3, for example, we would have one unit that faces the front. It must have a porch, but the other two units aren't required to. So the other two units wouldn't have the same affordability impact.
And yes, you can get AEC for sites in affordability unlocked. Okay, building frontages is added in the AEC section. So something doing affordability unlocked could apply for alternative compliance if they provide an alternative.
I think that sounds fair, and I'll be honest, this would be hopefully for affordability unlocked and anything that is even more affordable than that. So affordability unlocked gets us to like half an affordable complex, and there's going to be places that are going to be 80%, 100% affordable, so, for all of that. I do appreciate you all bringing this up.
Other questions?
Mine's not a question, it's just a discussion.
Okay, so I'll ask one real quick. So I'm not, I think what I heard was, part of the intent from staff was to ensure that at least one of the units is facing the street. But isn't there another way to just require that, that it's facing the street instead of requiring the private frontage?
Yes, first, I know the use is we do require, like townhomes must, one unit must face the street. And that is one aspect of it, but it's also additionally for like R4 that can go up to, you know, with, with the bonus, that 45 feet, or RM1 that can go up to 40 feet. It's not only the side, you know, not, the building not turning its side to the street is one aspect, but it's also to maintain that house scale aesthetic and to have, you know, a porch that engages more directly with the street front is something that helps to humanize the building and bring it to a scale that's more appropriate for the neighborhood and just continue that neighborhood aesthetic into the transition area.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions? Okay, speaking against? Commissioner Shaw?
So I heard staff say that they reduce the requirements to be, it sounds like, more affordable. And so, and so that, that makes me happy. So I think we could, that's why I don't think we need this, because I think they've already addressed the issue. And also, I'm just thinking through, you want, I'm not, you know, we have some houses that do have street frontage, and then some that don't. I mean, you want there to be some semblance, you know, some characteristics that bond those housing types together. And I'm just afraid, I mean, you're going to walk down the street, the ones that have affordable units are different than everything else. I mean, there is some basic characteristics that we want to maintain through all the housing, no matter if they're affordable or not. Hopefully, this won't be a huge cost, but I just think we should go with staff direction on this one.
Speaking for? Speaking against or neutral?
I, I think that, you know, we talk about the affordability of, of building this, but actually, a porch is actually a pretty affordable extra room to go sit and drink a cup of coffee in the morning or to do something.
It's more than a porch. It's not a porch. It's, it's more than a porch. It actually, it's like pulling in the whole front yard is basically, that's the idea behind it. It's more than a porch.
So to speak to that, private frontages are, a porch is included, an engaged porch, a porch that's unengaged, it just has like a veranda-style porch. We had stoop as in a, in the previous draft. We removed that because that's just a porch with, it's just a slightly smaller porch. So when we reduced the minimum size of porch, it became a stoop. So all of those count as private frontages, as well as things like light wells, courtyards. There's many different types of private frontages allowed, but porches are definitely allowed and are fairly reduced in size.
So, I mean, I, as I said before, I have a 1700 square foot home that I raised my three kids in, and I, I can't imagine if we didn't have the extra porch to go sit on, it wouldn't work.
Speaking for, are you?
I was going to ask a question.
Ask a question?
I have a question. As we've heard that you reduce the size of the private frontages, can you tell me how much and what you've done?
Very briefly, please, because we've got, we ran out of questions, so.
So I don't have my draft three, but I can tell you what the new size is. So for porch, it's six by four. I believe previously, if my memory serves, and this could definitely be incorrect because I don't have my draft three in front of me, but I believe it was eight by 10 previously. And so now it's reduced to six by four.
Okay, thank you.
For both enclosed and projecting.
All right, speaking for or against? Or neutral? All right, let's take a vote. The motion is by Shea and seconded by Seager. Consider eliminating R-zone private frontage requirements and replace with street trees. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
RB, but R2B.
Only an R2B.
Okay. Only an R2B. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
What are you doing?
Any opposed?
I, I, I like what staff told me, so I appreciate that.
All those against? So called you out, but that's okay. Wait, did you switch too?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did.
Okay, all right.
Staff addressed it.
Against? Any abstaining? Anderson?
I'm against it.
You were no, okay.
I don't own, own for, I don't even mind.
Okay, so that is one to 12.
Who voted for it?
Haven't had any one to 12s.
I think the only thing I want to mention is I really thank the working group for bringing this up.
Okay. All right, where are we at? Commissioner Kenny?
All right, we're on to ADUs. We can pass these next three amendments in about 15 seconds.
That's what you said last time.
This one is just entitled ADUs, and it says, direct city of Austin departments, including utilities, involved in assessing fees or permit review to reduce the cost of building ADUs through fee waivers, shorter approval times, et cetera. It's fairly self-explanatory.
Yeah, not, not opposed, just want to point out that those are mostly going to be code external things.
The next one in this bundle of three is give FAR bump to ADUs to incentivize, incentivize building in R2. Says give ADUs a 0.1 FAR increase over the single family only form in R2, e.g. a single family home gets 0.4 FAR, single family plus ADU gets 0.5. And it's suggested to put this in the FAR tables for each R-zone. We will point out this is less than the 0.6 for duplexes. And when I talk to some architects, they say, you know, on anything other than the smallest lots, they're not going to use the full 0.2 for the ADUs, so it's just going to go to the, to the main house and make it bigger. So we reduce it down to 0.1 so that it would just be an incentive for the ADU and not to make a bigger house.
Support the concept, I think, we were thinking maybe it would be easier to just not count the ADU against the principal FAR. And then on a 5,000 square foot lot, it would be about a point two.
And I assume when all these amendments get to council, you'll have a little comments category and you might say something like, we suggest this approach instead?
Yes, for sure. We'll have a, we will do that.
All right, so that's a way that these things could get to council. And then the next one is accessory apartment internal ADUs. This is one of my favorites and I think one of the most important. Define internal ADUs. You can get one per lot. So if you have R4, you can still just have one. It must have an internal door, i.e. a door between the main unit and the interior, and the ADU unit. It does not count and is an additional unit on the lot, but you don't get any additional FAR. We encourage separate access be figured out. Must be owner occupied. The utilities must be shared and there be a reasonable limitation on area. So an 1,500 square foot said question mark. The point is not to build bigger buildings, but to essentially allow you to get a building permit to put in like a second kitchen, so you can have mother-in-law unit. I have one, I know some others here on the commission have one, that's like the cheapest form of ADU you can make, and it doesn't make bigger buildings. Staff?
Staff's definitely in favor of making internal ADUs easier to do. We, we know that the code right now is a little bit open-ended in that regard, and just want to make sure that any additional requirements don't actually make it harder to do an ADU. Some of the requirements that we have, for instance, in today's code are pretty prescriptive about who can use them, that kind of a thing.
Right, yes. I think I had to sign a form saying that the person who's living back there was like my mother-in-law.
Probably so, yeah.
Yeah. I think our whole point here is that, you know, these don't require a separate HVAC, they don't require a separate firewall, it's not a different unit. Basically, we just want to make it so that you can get a building permit to put unit-ish stuff back there without it being considered as a unit. And if you went ahead and got, if you bought a duplex or you bought a house that already had an ADU and you were in R2 and you wanted your mother-in-law to come live with you or your kid, that you could put in something like that, you know, and, and you wouldn't be, you wouldn't have already hit your cap, that you always be able to add an internal ADU to your, to segment off part of your house.
Okay, so then if you, if you're in an R2 and you've got a duplex, the idea would be that you could add this internal and wouldn't count, wouldn't, wouldn't.
It doesn't count to the total unit, no.
Count to the total.
But we also said on duplex, we're saying only one.
One side.
Only one side can take it.
Only one side, okay. I don't know about, I'm not, I don't know about the counting towards the, the dwelling unit cap.
So that is critical towards if we are going to start seeing residential building built with a lot of duplex forms or house plus ADU forms. If we want this thing to, to work, I mean, I think the dominant form of building we're going to start seeing now is going to be people maxed out at two units and they won't have the ability to add on. So that's, it's part of our intent. We think that's pretty important. But in order to not have it get out of hand, we said just one per lot.
One per lot?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Well, we can do it.
Okay.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Schneider.
And I was going to offer an amendment, but in the interest of time, I'm not going to. And I would say, staff, when you're looking at this, just note that not all of us are of the same mind that it needs to be owner occupied.
Okay, questions?
I'm sorry. DSTRB, did you say it has, that we've?
Right now, the intent says owner occupied. I don't want to get in a half hour discussion about whether it needs to be owner occupied, but staff has the discretion to recommend parts of our stuff to council and not others, so.
I, I think I hear that and I would actually be in favor of that. I'm not sure that I agree with the homeowner requirement.
Don't be shy to make amendments, folks. All right, questions? Commissioner Zar?
So I'm sorry, can someone help me understand this? And I might just not be understanding this and it is late, I guess. I, I feel like this has some requirements that are more stringent than what is currently in the LTC draft. So, for example, to have an internal door, from my understanding, does not exist in the draft. Separate access encouraged, from my understanding, does not exist.
Commissioner Zar, if I can cut you off, because I think the, the fundamental understanding here is that, that's not required for ADUs that do count against your unit count? And this is saying under a very limited set of conditions, you can add an internal apartment, shares a door and everything, and it doesn't count against your unit count.
So essentially, there's two kinds of internal ADUs. There's the regular internal ADU and then this special.
You might call this an accessory apartment or something?
Right. This is more of an apartment.
It's designed to limit a very specific set of requirements, that it's, it's internal, it's small, it's got a door to your main unit.
That really helps me understand. Thank you.
It's, it's really mostly to get permission from DSD to put in a second kitchen.
And, and just to clarify, the internal, like you might be thinking attached ADU, that means there's still a fire separation, it has separate HVAC, separate utility, everything's separate. The whole point of this is you have a house and then you just, you're just kind of changing a part of it. You still have your doors that go inside the house, but now you have another kitchen, because right now you can't put another kitchen in.
Yeah, this is the same thing as when you had that bedroom for grandma. We'd had them for hundreds of years.
But grandma gets to cook, too.
Yeah, but grandma can cook now.
I think in Hyde Park, they're called servants' quarters in the restrictive covenants.
Okay, any other questions?
So I have a question for staff. So was this actually the definition of an accessory apartment that was eliminated from the previous code or current code?
That, that's the origin of the internal ADU, basically, yeah. Current accessory apartment.
So we're really just, we don't have, internal ADU is not something currently, we have attached ADU. Is that correct?
Yeah, the way that we describe ADUs in today's code, we have, we actually have them detached. They have to be detached.
But current code, do we call them internal or do we call them attached is an option?
Accessory apartments.
We call them accessory apartments if, if they are internal. We don't call them ADUs.
I think he's asking about draft four.
I'm sorry, the current draft.
Current draft.
Do, do AD, I'm just trying to make sure we give these a special name and call them out as something unique.
Right. And that's, that's why we, we kind of said, internally, we said, maybe we should call it accessory apartment, so it's not mixed up.
Okay. And then I guess for staff is how would we assure that people just aren't adding on to their house and not really using it as, as the purpose people have said? I mean, it's just a way to get more square footage?
No, you don't get more square footage.
So it's all, okay. So I just.
There's no FAR bump.
Okay, so it's all, the 700 square feet is internal to the existing unit?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
I, I hate to draw our time, but can I offer an amendment and just strike must be owner occupied?
Second.
And I can speak to that essentially, say, I feel like, I, I think we moved in the right direction, and I know this is not internally, but we moved in the right direction for not saying what kind of folks get to live in it, and I would be comfortable just keeping that out altogether. So thank you.
Questions?
I have a question on that. I mean, the intent of that was basically to, mostly about STRs, but that might be a whole nother discussion. So I'm okay with that, but, you know, I think it has to do with short-term rentals, you know, and the type one, type two, you know, like which one is, which license is given? But again, that, is that, that's a different working group, is that correct? Short-term STRs?
There's not a working, we're working on it.
I'm not aware of any amendments dealing with STRs.
Okay.
I, I guess I would be open to the suggestion of saying as we strike must be owner occupied to say not to be used as an STR, because I don't think that's the intention.
Right, I mean, my, my, yeah, my main thing is that it's not to be used as an SDR.
So would you be amenable?
Well, if it, if it owner occupied, that's type one, is that right?
Yes.
Is that right? So type one, we let that be what it is, but it's to keep people from, a commercial person renting, again, commercial second, you know, like a, somebody leasing who's going to lease it again, and that is already completely against all, you know, leasing rules and laws. And so I, I, I want to make sure that if we're going to have it, then it's, it's mostly about STRs, that's why.
But type twos are already restricted in residential zones.
So can staff kind of chime in on STR? Because I know that.
You can't get licenses.
Right, so S, type twos, you already can't get any more licenses. We're not worried about that then. Okay.
That's right. That could all change.
That could change.
Well, can we just specify then specifically about the short-term rentals? I mean, that, that's the main basis.
I mean, that, that's already in the draft.
Yeah, it's intended, yeah.
Okay, then we'll leave it.
Okay, I guess we're sticking to the, what I just said, so.
Strike owner occupied.
Striking must be owner occupied.
Other questions? All right, speaking against? Speaking for?
Just, the reason I like this is that if somebody wants to spec build a house or something and have a feature, be it has a mother-in-law apartment, they could do that. So it doesn't necessarily need to be an owner project.
Okay. Speaking against or neutral? All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, that motion carries unanimously, so that is striked. Any other questions? I have a question for you, Commissioner Kenny?
I just have one question for staff, whenever.
Okay. Commissioner Kenny, so why the, why the plus point one instead of just the ADU not counting toward the FAR? Or did y'all consider that?
I don't think we really considered it. We just wanted to incentivize ADUs and that's the main thing, we wanted to incentivize them, not make you basically take a hit on the main house if you wanted to have an ADU as well.
And does it, does it do the same thing?
It would do the same thing.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Shaw?
So we talked about a cap on the total, when we do the preservation bonus, right? Didn't that come up?
Actually, Shaw, you already had a question. I'm sorry. Anderson?
Curious if staff can weigh in on number 34?
34 we're not.
That is the next set. It's not part of this set.
This is not what we're voting on.
So we're just 1929? The consent package is just 192926. Okay, thanks. 34 is a discussion item.
Any other questions? I hate to do this, but I'm going to do an amendment to do the FAR. ADU does not count toward the FAR to 29.
I'll second that.
Okay, questions? Commissioner Yanis Polito?
So this would, you're proposing an amendment?
I'm striking on number 29 instead of the point one increase to just say that ADUs do not count toward the FAR.
Okay, I, I'm in support of making them easier. I guess I'm just wondering about, does this sort of distort, to a degree, how FAR is counted? I'm, I'm a little bit, it's an increased entitlement.
It's an unlimited increase.
No, it's limited to 1,100 square feet.
Limited to 1,100 square feet. Hasn't there been talk about, or was this covered in your previous amendment? Okay, about stair stepping that, okay. So 1,100 feet would be?
If it was stair step down to 700, then the allotment would be 700. So it's whatever you're, whatever you're allowed to build as an ADU there, that's what doesn't count if you build the ADU that size.
Yeah, my intent is just to simplify it. Anyway.
I guess I'm, I'm just confused about allowing increased FAR but not calling it increased FAR. It seems like, I don't know, it seems like, it doesn't seem right to me.
So to speak to that, point two FAR is 11, of a standard 5,000 square foot lot, is 1,100 square feet, which is what the maximum ADU size is, which is why staff recommends just not counting it against the FAR, because then a house could have the point four and then the ADU could have this point up to point two. However, if you give the, the lot additional FAR, it could actually go to the house instead of to the ADU where we would like to see it. Additionally, ADUs are not regulated in our minimum lot size, or our minimum lot table in each zone. So they're regulated by use in the special to use district or section of the code. And so it would be complicated to call them out in each zone that they're allowed and list an FAR for them. So instead, we just recommend just not, not assigning them an FAR at all.
Okay, does that make sense? So then in this proposed amendment, you would not increase the allowance of FAR. You would keep it at point four, for example?
That's correct. Yeah, my intent is to not incentivize moving FAR from the ADU to the main house and making the ADU smaller. It's just to not count the ADU, leave the main house at point four.
Got it. Thank you.
Other questions?
But that's still, so you, so the ADU, the square footage doesn't count toward FAR? The total FAR?
Other questions? Speaking, Commissioner Shaw, go ahead. No, no, you're in.
Just want to make sure, so when we do the preservation bonus total, then the ADU doesn't really enter into that calculation? It's just between the house and the preservation unit? Remember the FAR cap we put on?
Yes, I mean, I think when staff is drafting up, there's going to be a lot of things that interact and they'll probably propose a way to council to deal with that interaction.
They'll have to recalibrate in some way.
Okay.
Other questions? Speaking against? This is just the amendment?
So I'm going to speak against it. I understand your intent, but I mean, I guess anytime we have unregulated FAR, I have a concern with it. I think if 34 comes about, then maybe we could work with that, but as it is, just as it is, I'm going to speak, I'm, I'm going to be voting against it, just because it's, it's kind of unregulated at that point.
Okay. Kenny, speaking for? Commissioner Kenny?
Yeah, this is a more elegant way to get at the same thing, I think, and I think we just didn't really, we knew that we wanted to incentivize it. The reason we didn't, we did, talked about point one instead of point two is we didn't want to allow the main house to get bigger, and this more elegantly achieves the same thing. So you can't build a tiny ADU and give more square footage to the main house. That's not the point.
Speaking against or neutral? Speaking for?
I remember that meeting we had at the water building up there on 10th Street, but two years ago, and Mr. Park said, you know, you can allow ADUs or you can promote ADUs. And I love everything we can do to help promote them. I think this does that, so big fan of this.
That's a good line. All right, all those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Abstaining? Okay, so that motion carries eleven, two, one?
Eleven what?
Eleven one, or ten one, ten two, one?
Ten, ten two, one.
All right, so now we're back to nineteen twenty-nine twenty-six. Kenny Schneider, speaking against? Speaking for? All those in favor, raise your hand? Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries unanimously, thank you. All right, thirty-four, who's that? Seeger?
That's me. Okay, what I, what I'm proposing is to return to the scaled ADU size that we had in draft three. When draft three came out, we, or the revised LDC, it came out as scaled base to, scaled to the lot size. And this was because we had been talking compact connected, small lots, small houses, and then we get scaled ADUs to the lot size. It made a lot, a lot of sense. The eleven hundred square feet ADU doesn't make sense to me. And Jim Duncan did a presentation on this, and I'm using his figures on it. He presented it to Zap a couple weeks ago. But he looked at some of the cities that we often benchmark ourselves against, like Denver, and a few Minneapolis now, and a few other cities. And he looked at the size permitted of the ADUs. And they ranged from four hundred, which was the smallest, up to a thousand. I then took those numbers and looked at the mean and the average throughout these twelve cities, and it was in the range of seven hundred and fifty square feet, and it's, that seemed reasonable. What I'd like to propose for the smaller, less expensive, easier to finance ADUs, is twenty-five hundred, the last go down, it was thirty-five hundred, but we now have twenty-five hundred square foot lots, to four nine nine nine, seven hundred and fifty, which is the nationwide, or the average of the twelve. I think the nationwide average is around eight hundred and fifty. And then take five thousand to six nine 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 nine, to nine seventy-five, and over seven thousand. And this is what was proposed, and what we agreed to in draft three. And I'm bringing it back to see if we can get ADU scaled to lot size.
Okay, thank you. Second, Commissioner Shea, staff?
So, in changing the minimum, sorry, the maximum lots, the maximum square footage for an ADU to eleven hundred, instead of scaling it the way it was in previous drafts, we were trying to make it simpler, so that there's just one cap. And the eleven hundred square feet does kind of have its origins in today's code. It's been that, that number is used today.
Right.
But we think it's a good number that kind of, it's smaller than a standard house, but it's big enough to accommodate maybe a small family. And it really just gives a lot of flexibility to an owner with different sized lots. It, it obviously doesn't mean that it has to be built that big, it just gives the option. And so, we really are shooting for flexibility and simplicity.
And I understand that, but unfortunately, sometimes we have builders, or even homeowners, that see eleven hundred and may not be able to meet the IC of their lot, and just build bigger ADUs. And with what we're proposing, limited oversight and limited inspections, et cetera, to make these ADUs less expensive, that mistakes can happen more frequently if there isn't a set up to for each lot range. I'm open to the size of the lot ranges, but I'd really like to see it going back to the scaled, to get a unit, but have it still small and affordable. The bigger they are, the less, the more expensive they will be to rent. And, you know, seniors many times have a lot of space, no money, so they could build an ADU that fits their lot in the back and rent their big house. And students don't have any money, so they don't really need a lot of space many times. That's, that's my reasoning, let's go back to scaling, so we don't end up with a lot of big mistakes.
Okay, questions? No questions. Okay, speaking against? Commissioner Kenny?
Commissioner Seeger knows that I don't like this. And, you know, I guess I'm totally unconvinced that ADU regulations in other cities are anything we should be basing things on, since ADUs, I think, are widely acknowledged as something that has been really screwed up in, in most cities until starting to be now. But I think the main thing here is that eleven hundred square feet is a family-friendly size. My, my home in Windsor Park, and most of the homes in my parts of Windsor Park, before we added on my mother-in-law area, was nine hundred and sixty square feet, it was a three-two. And I think that if we're going, if we're mandating lower than eleven hundred, and because impervious cover is still a real limiter, so even though we're exempting the FAR, you know, you're not, you know, you're, you're still going to have, I see that you have to balance between the two units. And all this is really going to do is, is encourage more of the large house, small ADU form, rather than maybe a smaller house, larger ADU form, which means less, fewer family-friendly units. So, I think if you can fit it on there, then we should go for it and make a home for a new family.
Speaking for?
Oh, me. Okay. I'm going to speak for this, because we just basically unlocked, with the previous one, on all lots, to be able to unlock the full amount, eleven hundred square foot is what, what it is going to be. But I firmly believe that smaller lots, supposed to be producing smaller homes, smaller, more affordable units. And that was the whole basis of how we, you know, why we started having smaller lots, and to make things more affordable. As one of the speakers this, this evening mentioned, on a brand-new thousand-square-foot unit, I mean, that's, they're asking, what, three thousand dollars a month for a thousand square foot? That's hundred and forty percent MFI. So, if we're going to be doing eleven hundred square foot, and everybody at this point is just going to be building eleven hundred square foot, because it doesn't count toward their FAR, they're going to build it. And we're not going to have any of these affordable ADUs, because everybody's going to be building the largest that they can. So, I think by having a scalability of that based on your lot size, we're going to be able to have a much better variety of ADUs at different prices. And I have, you know, I have a duplex each side, seven hundred and fifty square foot, and it, it definitely caters to, you know, to starting family, or even young professionals, or just new married, new people who are just married. And from there, they can also move on up to nine seventy-five, eleven hundred square foot. But if you don't cap it, you let it go, you know, just untethered, then we're only going to see these three thousand dollars a month units. So, that's why I'm supporting it.
Speaking against? Commissioner Zor?
So, I'm going to speak neutral on this. I, I think I, I hear that, and I honestly really appreciate that you all have called out certain things, because I keep on hearing this. I think, I'm just conflicted, because there's other populations, I know we've been really considering family-friendly housing, so I understand. I, I guess my only concern is the impact this would have on family-friendly housing. But I think at the same time, I'll be honest, I've heard this from multiple folks, that there are people, particularly like seniors, who might not need larger homes. And I think it's just that balancing act between trying to find housing for families versus families for, for housing for individuals. And so, I think just based on that reason, I'll abstain from this, but I think I do appreciate you all calling that out and looking into this issue.
Speaking for? Commissioner Yanis Polido, go ahead.
So, I agree, I think we need to scale this, and, I mean, I'll, I'll second Commissioner Shea's comment. I think we've been pushed a certain argument for this whole pro-density, missing middle, which is we need smaller structures on smaller lots. You know, Anik's talked about this with our, our neighborhood, in my own neighborhood. Our, our problem is that all of our structures are too big. And it's, it's sort of ironic, I mean, I, I understand that eleven hundred feet, square feet is more comfortable for a larger family. But I also think if we want to get back to some of these values, I mean, when we look, we have tons of older neighborhoods, and to the point made earlier, pre-nineteen sixty, less car-centric, less garage-centric, these are family homes under a thousand square foot, feet. Eight hundred and fifty square feet, nine hundred and fifty square feet. In my neighborhood, there's a number of three-bedroom houses, the original footprint is under a thousand square feet. And so, it can be done, you can build family-friendly housing in smaller structures. But I agree, if we're, especially now, if we're unlimiting, if we're, if we're not even counting that as additional FAR, I, I see what the current code allows. There's some ADUs in my neighborhood, and they are monstrous, especially because of the constrictions that force them to go, you know, up. I don't think that they should be allowed, there's some that were allowed way bigger than, than what should be. And it's not what we're going for, it's not the kind of housing that I think that we have set out and have shared priorities around. So, I think this is appropriate, and I don't think it's that limiting. I mean, the smallest one here being seven hundred and fifty square feet, that's almost twice as large as the affordable condos that are coming up around my neighborhood. So, a lot more family-friendly than a tiny studio.
Okay, last commissioner, speaking against? I'll, I'll speak neutral. I, I can see the argument, I, I know that there could be a smaller ADU that perhaps would be more affordable. I'm not convinced that we need three, three gradations, you know, maybe a seven fifty, four under five thousand, and eleven hundred over. But at the, on the other hand, I can also see the argument about, if you have a smaller lot, say twenty-five hundred square feet, I think you'd be able to put in something closer to, close to eleven hundred, maybe not quite eleven hundred. And twenty-five hundred square foot lot, yeah, five hundred, five hundred square foot footprints, two stories. I've seen, I've seen it done, so. So, as is, I probably can't vote for this.
Chair, I'm seeking clarification on the amendment, based on what you just said. Is it just, it's not, you're not saying to use that scale, you're just saying to scale it, is that correct?
I'm saying to use that scale, but I am open to any scale that does.
Is that part of your motion, the, the suggested language?
Yes. That goes back to draft three, which we approved last year.
Okay. So, would you be amenable to just carrying the intent and not the specific language?
And ask staff, staff supports eleven hundred. So, it would be hard to get a recommendation when.
How about, how about you say suggest, or suggest to return?
I'm okay with suggest.
To return to draft three proportions? I mean, it's a suggestion.
Okay. Okay, I'm okay with suggest. I'd really like a stronger wording, but in looking at the commission, I don't think I have the support for this scale. So, I might be able to get suggest. So, I agree with suggest.
It's suggested text, are you suggesting the suggested text?
I am suggesting.
How about consider?
Consider.
Consider?
Return to, how about, let's move over the text over to the intent and put consider. Consider return to code next draft three.
All right, let's move this along, folks.
Chair, process-related question, would that not, since the motion has already been stated, would that not require an amendment?
Her motion intended to include the suggested text, so I, I think it's still okay.
It's getting late, let's go.
Okay. So, we've got three fours, three against. All those in favor?
Chair, you spoke neutral, and somehow that got a big conversation going again. I'd like to speak against this. This goes against flexibility, this is not simpler. You know, it's interesting, we hear about multifamily, and we hear kind of some lament, some lamenting talk about, oh, the units aren't quite big enough, and then here's an opportunity to just allow ADUs to go to eleven hundred feet, not requiring it, but just giving folks the flexibility to go that large. I've never lived in a home that large, and as an adult, I think that that's great. And I've, I've seen a lot of great two-bedroom designs, and it just gives flexibility to folks, and that's what this whole code's supposed to be. Staff doesn't want it, so hopefully we vote this down.
Okay, now let's take a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand? Three, four, five. All those against? Three, four, five, six. Any abstaining? Okay, two abstaining, so that motion fails. Five, six, two. Did I get that right?
Yes.
I think I'm not the person to ask.
Okay, we're on to mapping. We have one consent and two discussion amendments. The first consent one, title is map greenfield lots more intensely than R2. And the intent is remap, and let's just say consider remapping. Consider remapping current R2 on vacant lots to a higher intensity, preferably one with an affordable bonus, zoning should be compatible with adjacent lots. And this, the genesis of this came from Commissioner Shea, who was aware of some vacant lots that were zoned as R2. If we give a more intense zoning there, it won't displace anyone by definition, and could get some more housing in some good places.
Yes, so, staff is in agreement with this amendment, and part of that agreement is the fact that this is part of our methodology at the moment. So, we are currently, so through iterations, we've always tried to bring some standard lots into conformance through zoning of a smaller lot zone. So, it's an iterative process, it's still ongoing, and we're still identifying all of these properties. But our process at the moment, just to get real specific, real quick, at ten forty-five at night, but is to find properties that are between the size of thirty-five hundred square feet and five thousand square feet and zone them R2C. And then properties, and this is properties that are currently SF, I should add to. And then properties that are between the size of twenty-five hundred square feet and thirty-five hundred square feet and zone them the R1 zone. So, that is part of our methodology, and something that we're continuing to work on and identify.
Great, well, all we're offering here is intent, so it sounds like this is an agreement.
So, I have a question, so what about lots that are, I don't know, half an acre, one acre, two acre?
Let me, let me get a second and give you a chance to ask a question.
I'll second, because I see mine.
So, Kenny Shea, all right, go ahead.
So, this has to do with much larger lots. I mean, these are lots that are, I mean, have potential to be, I don't know, mapped with much higher, something with, that kind of could be an SF, it's, it's almost like an SF six type, that it could be, because there's much larger lots, and these are greenfield, never had anything. And these are, these are mapped with R2s in them, some, I've seen some R2As, R2Cs, and these are four to six acre lots that I've been looking at, completely vacant, and never been developed on. Next, you know, which are close to TPNs. And so, I'm wondering, so why, why were those with R2s? I mean, I'm thinking it's like, they should be something that we could actually leverage to get some affordable units on? They won't displace anybody?
Yeah, so forgive me, I was speaking to R31, not 32, so that is my mistake. But to speak to that, yes, we are not, I, I understand what you're saying, and we're not opposed to this directive about mapping vacant properties as a different zoning designation. However, we were cognizant about the fact that we are not, we were not directed to increase zoning entitlements, upzone on properties unless it was through the transitionary and mapping. And so, I think that we're open to reviewing where these properties are, and then finding maybe some potential criteria to add on top of what could be a viable option for increasing entitlements within certain other elements.
Okay, and would that be, I know you guys are working on some units per acre tools. So, would that be given that, or would, or would these lots be mostly mapped with just like what's around it? Like, you know, if you have a three-acre lot, you know, and you're going to put R2C on it, means that you end up having full preliminary plans, and I don't know, twenty? twenty different subdivision plans versus using a units-per-acre zoning category? Would that be part of the plan, using units-per-acre? Or would it still be given something that somebody has to, you know, go through preliminary plans and twenty different subdivision processes?
Yeah, I really can't speak to that detail right now. This is a kind of a broad directive, and there's going to have to be a lot of research that goes into what our recommendations to this would be.
Okay, so what would you need from us?
Good question. I guess, is the intent of this provide for missing middle housing or just general increase in entitlements? Are we looking for multifamily, are we looking for commercial?
Providing for more missing middle with leveraging the ability to get some bonuses, specifically because this is where we could actually get more density without displacing anybody. And this would actually take the pressure off of any of the neighborhoods surrounding it, because, you know, we're not displacing anybody, we're not increasing their entitlement, we're not doing anything to what they're doing. We're actually going to be able to use this to take off the pressures of a lot of those, especially a lot of the gentrifying neighborhoods.
Question, she might, can I ask a question or add something?
You can either respond or ask your own question.
I'm going to respond and say, and also ask a question from staff. So my understanding is that currently, the greenfield bonus has not been carried forward, right? So the greenfield bonus that currently exists in our current code has not been carried forward. And what I'm hearing is essentially the greenfield bonus being carried forward, or something like it. So I think what I'm hearing is, I really like this direction, and maybe we can talk about staff considering the greenfield bonus. Would that help clarify some of the things that we're seeing?
You're correct that the greenfield bonus is not carried forward. I guess, I think what this sounded more like was just a consideration of a different zoning district or additional entitlements.
It says potentially with, preferably one with an affordable bonus.
With an affordable bonus. Okay, so I see what you're saying. It could be something akin to...
Okay, and I don't know if this would require a new zone. Maybe it's a new zone, but with some of the stuff that already existed, the greenfield bonus carried forward, that might help clarify. I think it's the same intention, that greenfield spaces, we can have an increased bonus and have greater affordability where we're not likely to displace someone. And I know that currently exists under code. Eric, I'm sorry, did you want to say something as well?
If I can answer, I want to just point out that Commissioner Shea is talking about large lots, the SF6 replacement tool that we mentioned. We mentioned that we'd like to look into having an affordable component to it. That base is currently only eleven units per acre. So that has a lot of room to bonus up without getting incompatible. But I think, and you can confirm, that the verbiage "consider" there means that consider mapping something there, or consider some sort of incentive that layers on top. When you consider it, there could be a lot of different ways to skin this cat.
Was there a question in there?
Right.
It does speak to mapping in the directive.
Okay. So I've got a question for Commissioner Shea. So it sounded to me more like, it sounded to me more like it was a direction to avoid the hassle of subdividing, not necessarily, I mean, you're not really increasing the entitlements. If it's an SF3 lot that could be subdivided into ten lots, essentially what you're doing is avoiding the subdivision process.
Right, but so, under today's code, basically you could have a huge two-acre and then SF3, and instead of doing that, they say, hey, let's go SF6. You could end up, as Commissioner Kenny probably, you could pretty much get the same density as SF3, but it's extremely costly that way. So it sounds like staff is working on a tool of that anyway. But my concern is that this is our opportunity to get some affordability out of this, to really up the amount of units we can get. And we should entice the developer to build more, and this is the chance that we have. If we don't, if we have somebody who's going to take a SF3 that got hit by R2A, and he's just going to put a bunch of, you know, single-family homes, and it was next to a transportation network, you know, and it would have been the biggest waste of opportunity.
Can I, I'm sorry, respond to that quickly? I was going to say, so I'm looking at the greenfield. We have a smart housing greenfield, single-family density bonus, and a smart housing greenfield multifamily density bonus in lieu for certain affordability requirements. In the single-family, on SF2 and SF3 zoning districts on lots three acres or greater, site may be developed under SF4A zoning district standards. And for the multifamily density bonus, it's undeveloped lots with MF2 through MF5 zoning, site may be developed under MF6 zoning district standards.
Okay. So that's sort of SF4. SF4 still requires, let's say, like twenty or thirty different subdivision. And each subdivision case could cost twenty, thirty, whatever, grand versus if you did a condo regime with a site plan. And so, again, if affordability is the key here, you know, where do you see it with the SF3 to SF6? And then, but we want to have that, but we want to try to squeeze some extra density units out of it, yeah.
Okay, question, Commissioner Seeger?
No, I had a comment.
Okay, no comments yet.
We're not in comments? It sounds like it, okay.
Turn it into a question, say, right?
Fair enough, fair enough.
Raise up the tone at the end of your sentence.
Oh, okay.
Questions? Speaking against? Okay, so now is comments, Commissioner Seeger? Did you want to speak for or against?
I'm for it. Yes, and I'd really like to emphasize that since we're going to be, at least if this particular zoning goes through, working with a really nice piece of greenfield, that perhaps we can get a lot of density, bonus density, affordable housing, and not have to deal with the complexities of compatibility or anything else. We can be creative, and I'd say, let's look at this creatively. Let's look at the fees also, because subdivisions are expensive, and find a way to take a large piece of land that could be misused under current zoning, find something where it really is mandated that there is a lot of affordable housing, because there's going to be a lot of entitlements in there. That was my comment.
Okay, I can't comment, what's up?
Against or for?
Wait, is this a comment?
No, comments are, yeah, comments, but for and against only.
Commissioner Seeger just spoke for.
She spoke for.
Right, so I can, okay, so then I have to wait.
Yes. Against or neutral? Speaking for? Go ahead.
So in addition, I mean, rather, even beyond just straight density, other things that we need to consider about these large lots, especially if it's next to other developments that are around it, whether they, maybe they were developed prior to some water quality requirements, and also even next to single-family residential, is the ability of this site to also take care of additional water quality for the area? Because typically, a lot of times, these sites are where all the water ends up being dumped on or something will flow through. So we could use this, and when they build, and they have to do site plan at this point, if it's a large lot, when they do site plan, the other incentives they can also provide for the area is better water quality. The other thing is also parkland. I mean, this is, on these larger lots, you're also going to provide parkland as well. So there's so many things that we could build into the incentives, into these larger lots to provide community benefits rather than just density. And I think we should consider those points as well in the overall package.
Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Are we missing Anderson? Okay. Twelve zero. All right.
Okay.
So let's, before we go there, we're coming up on 11:00 PM. We have thirty more minutes. I want to quickly talk about, we were hoping to get through downtown today, or I was anyway. But we haven't gotten to non-residential yet. And so what I want to talk about is tomorrow, five to 11:30. And then we might need another day before the 12th. How likely is that? Yes? Eleventh is what we talked about, right?
Can we just do, show hands?
Yeah, we can. I just want to ask Andrew, though. You can find us a spot somewhere on the eleventh?
Chair, Commissioner Lee is on the interview. I believe the eleventh is possible. There are some resources that are out of my direct control, so I would have to confirm at a later time.
All right, show of hands on November 11th.
The November 11th is a holiday.
Uh huh.
And we cannot, for a variety of reasons, one of which it's a holiday, but the other being that we cannot pay, that would have budgetary implications that I don't think we're prepared to address, so.
Hadn't we considered November 11th in the past? It was a holiday, is, it was a different holiday? Okay. It wasn't a city holiday, yeah, okay. Who has 11th off? I don't have 11th off.
Can we meet the day after, the 13th?
I want to finish this by the 12th and go home.
So did we already ask everybody about more time on the 12th, starting early?
Well, Commissioner Thompson said we would stay as, tonight as long as we need to, to finish downtown. Is that what I heard?
That's what I proposed.
Have we completely ruled out Thursday and Friday?
Not yet. Friday? No?
Chair, we are past the seventy-two hours for posting.
Saturday.
Do you get the same budgetary? I'm assuming it's that the budget is, because there's overtime or special things?
That's not an issue. Just do what works for you all.
Just Saturday or Monday as well?
Either one, it's Saturday or Monday.
All right, Anik's buying at the bar.
Your liaison suggests Monday. All right, all those in favor?
I'm sorry, can I just quickly ask staff's preference on either Saturday or Monday? I know it's a holiday specifically on Monday and then Saturday is the weekend as well. Is there any preference, or do you all hate us anyways?
Yeah, I think they hate us anyway. Let's do, let's take a vote for Monday. Who's those motion and second? Seeger and Thompson, all those in favor, raise your hand for Monday? Against? Abstaining? Okay. So that passes. I need to know, though, even though it passes, I need to know who can make it. Now that it's passed, who cannot, sorry, who cannot make it?
Do you have a time?
One, two. Time would be five to 11, same time. Everyone else can make it. Okay. All right, Andrew? If the notice time is coming up soon, then we should probably do that.
Confirm the date, I'm sorry.
November 11th, Monday.
Monday, the 11th, five to 11.
Okay, Commissioner Kenny?
All right, it sounds like maybe this is something staff has already noticed that happened, but just, so the motion, 31, correct R1 map to match existing small lot amnesty lots. Intent says, consider making R1 replacement for small lot amnesty match current zoning by mapping it everywhere, current small lot amnesty SF zoning is mapped. So currently, if you're in a neighborhood that adopted it, the small lot amnesty tool, and your lot is of substandard size, then you get the R1 entitlements. But R1 didn't get mapped everywhere where there are substandard zones. I know because people have emailed me saying that I'm now going to be noncompliant. Take it away.
Yes, and that's part of that continuing iterative process, where we're continuing to identify those properties, because there's more and more and more that we find as we continue this research. The one thing that I failed to mention just a few minutes ago is the fact that we are doing this citywide, not just in those areas that adopted small lot amnesty, just to be clear.
Okay, great. And, yeah, that's, I'm good.
Second? Seeger? Questions?
So if we know of people who've been inquiring, should, I mean, are you going through finding them, or are people sending them to you? I mean, how does that work?
Yeah, we're using our TCAD data along with our zoning data, combining through them to analyze where these properties are. And then, of course, whenever it's brought to our attention.
Other questions? Speaking against? Speaking for? Let's take a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay, so that motion carries, twelve zero.
Commissioner Seeger, this is your amendment, number 37.
Okay, and I think, I think this will go fairly quickly.
And I guess this was, I miscategorized this as mapping. It's not actually mapping.
No, it's not.
It's a text change.
Exactly. It's the basis, and it's about the preservation incentive. As stated, right now, on the preservation incentive, the qualifying dwelling unit does not have a time limit as to how long that unit needs to be maintained. And I see you shaking your head, okay. And let's take it, I have two things. Is that going to be changed? I won't belabor this if it is.
Yeah, we're planning on looking at a potential time limit, or required time period.
So there will be a required time period in the next staff report, or whatever?
Yeah, because it's currently silent.
Right.
And it effectively means in perpetuity, so.
Or it means that as soon as you build the other unit, there goes the first one, okay.
So maybe it's open to interpretation and it needs to be clarified.
Right, close the interpretation. The second thing is that in the current proposed, I guess, remodeling phase of it, it doesn't specify or it doesn't suggest that the front-facing facade be maintained. And that is what we originally started talking about preservation incentives way back when. And I'd like to see something where that front-facing facade is maintained so that the intent of preservation does carry forward.
And we agree, because it's really a tool that's, it's at least partly about character, that that front facade is an important part of that.
Great.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Shaw, questions? Commissioner Zor?
I have a question for staff. I feel like on that question of the front should be maintained, would that mean that somebody should be able to add an internal ADU towards the back of the house? So your street facing facade would not change your preservation. Would you violate your preservation bonus if you did an internal ADU towards the back?
So currently, the draft has a limitation on how much additional square footage you can add. And we're planning on reviewing the totality of how much needs to be preserved, but also how much you can modify that unit. So that's something that we're going to have to look at.
Can I propose an amendment to this, to say, somewhere, I'm not sure where it would go, and also consider implications for internal ADU? So it would be, the new code does not preserve the streetscape appearance or character? Can propose code does not, well, I mean, this isn't, essentially in addition to preserving the streetscape appearance, also try to figure out the implications of an internal ADU towards the back?
That is not being addressed.
Can I make an amendment and add?
Yes, you can.
Yes, I'll propose an amendment. So I'm proposing an amendment, I'm trying to see where it goes. But essentially, towards the end, somewhere say, without altering the streetscape appearance, consider implications for internal ADU. With the preservation bonus.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Kenny? Did you want to speak to it further?
I, I think essentially to say, I feel like it's just something worth considering. I'm hearing that staff would be considering things like that, so I'm just sort of sending another reminder to say please consider internal ADU, with the understanding that I think I agree with Commissioner Seager in saying that the front streetscape should not change, since that is in some ways the base intention of the preservation bonus. But also try to consider, since we've talked about relaxing requirements for internal ADUs, how to do that within the preservation bonus.
Okay, questions? Speaking against? Speaking for? Let's take a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries unanimously, so now we're back to the main motion. Questions? Speaking against? Commissioner Kenny?
So I don't necessarily agree that the intent of the preservation incentive, at least, is limited to maintaining the block streetscape and neighborhood character, so that ADUs can be added with little disruption. I mean, we're actually talking about adding large duplexes to it as well. I think, for me at least, the preservation incentive is more about preserving those market rate affordable units without needing to touch them much, so rent stays low. This is more about an affordability thing than a streetscape thing for me. And today, I was looking at pictures of lots, that there are a number of lots in town where the, that have just absolutely massive lots, where the house is set way, way, way back on, on the lot. And, yeah, I'd like to preserve that market rate affordable unit and put a duplex on the front of it. In the cases where it's not way, way, way back, it's not going to be feasible to add stuff onto the front anyways, so I think this is gonna really only apply to those limited number of cases where there's a prime opportunity to increase housing, so I'm opposed.
Speaking for? Speaking against or neutral? Speaking for? Okay, let's take a vote. So this is number 37, preservation incentive. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those against? Abstaining?
Yes.
Yeah. Were you abstaining, Anderson? Against, abstaining? Okay. So that was three against, one abstaining. And the rest were four. So nine, three, one?
Okay.
Okay, we're actually gonna make it into...
I'm gonna try to get some sense done here before we go, just to knock some off. So I'm gonna try with some of the ones that I think are the easy ones. So we'll, we'll see how far I can get on that. So one thing you may want for reference is the sheet that I passed out here. This is a handy guide to all your non-residential zones. We only have as before us proposals to change the FAR and the height. Everything else there is just, there is kind of a reference. And then this is the natural building height study that we did, which is the basis for a lot of the height amendments. So you just may want to have that. So for the first consent, uncapped FAR and bonuses, staff has repeatedly said that the FAR is not intending to be a limiting factor, however I've heard in the bonus configuration. But I've heard from a number of architects who say that they think it is a limiting factor in some of those zones. So I'm proposing that we make sure the FAR doesn't get in the way in the bonus configuration, that we remove the FAR in the bonus zone configuration for all MU and RM zones, since it's already done in MS zones.
Is that a consent?
Yes.
Are you doing multiple?
Yes.
Okay. Staff? Remove max FAR in MU and RM in the bonus, bonus configuration.
I think that we're generally in agreement. We probably want to look at the zones a little more, but, but, you know, it's what we do with VMU today. It's kind of the direction we've gone in this code, and, and so I think, probably in favor, but we want to look at it still closer.
But to confirm, FAR is not supposed to be a limiter in the bonuses.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So shouldn't be a need for it to be on there. Okay. All right. And then the, I'm gonna combine this with number three, which is make the FAR in RM1, MU1, and MU2 based on units, not form. These are the only non-resi zones, well, let me read the text. Change FAR table to correspond to available units. Keep one to two units at 0.4, which is the current zoning for SF2 or 3 sites. And staff should calibrate remaining gradient for feasibility and to incentivize the bonus. The, these are the only zones that, like, the R zones have, like, different FAR. If you have, like, a duplex or multifamily or something like that, it doesn't make a lot of sense. Let's not make it so that you can game the system by changing the form and getting bigger units, but instead just have a standard number of floor area allocated per unit. Or range of units.
Do not oppose.
Okay, let's just go with those two to start with.
Okay, so we're doing one and three?
Yeah.
Okay, Kenny, second by Thompson? Questions? We're doing one and three. Speaking against? Speaking for? Let's take a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, so that passes 11 to 2.
I'm just gonna keep doing the easy ones, so we can get as many of these out as possible, what I think are easy. You may differ. Number two, let's do a standalone, restore the current code for ground floor height in corridor zones. And the intent text is replace the 18-foot required height for activated ground floors in MS zones, return it to the current 12-foot minimum that we have for corridor mixed-use zones with an activated ground floor. A lot of architects and AIA, I believe as well, have said 18 feet is just really, really high. For context, I would say that the new Texas Mutual building in Miller has 16-foot for the first floor that includes their lobby and the Kirby Lane, which even has the mechanical inside that envelope. What this does is it makes the ground floor just more expensive, and it's, it's more of a fitting of a downtown office building, not, you know, your regular corridor size. It could also actually eliminate an entire floor off the building, because you're requiring the first floor to be high. So AIA recommended 14 feet, and I think we should just go down to the 12 feet that we have currently.
For these individual amendments, I want to get a second first before staff?
Yep.
Okay. Thompson, okay?
So in draft three, it was 12 feet floor to floor, and so, but that was, we were advised by architects during our testing, that that is not something that they actually measure. They don't measure floor to floor that way. They actually do floor to bottom of structure, which incorporates, incorporates things like drop ceilings and mechanical equipment and everything like that. So 18 feet is not actually the environment, the space that would be habitable. It's actually, it would be more like a 14-foot ceiling with all the mechanical and structural beams and everything that would be encapsulated in the ceiling. So that's, so when we adjusted it, it's now floor to bottom of structure, based on recommendations from our architects that we had come and do testing. And that's also why our MS have an additional five feet where everything else is 60. These are 65 and 45, because we are accommodating that additional height that's required on the ground floor. So it's actually a very commiserate height requirement, and MS is supposed to have these pedestrian-oriented uses on the ground floor, and we want to create a viable retail space and not have, you know, shortened retail spaces on the ground floor that can't actually be rented out, which is why this requirement's in place.
Okay.
So let's do, let's do the clarifications and questions, unless it's very quick.
Right. Well, I'm going to offer an amendment to change 12 to 14, which is the AIA recommendation. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Seager.
Can you just withdraw and redo the...
Okay, I withdraw and resubmit at 14 feet, which is the AIA recommendation. In discussion, they agree with me that 18 feet, it's, it's a very high-end retail, and it's not, it drives up the cost of those spaces.
Okay. Thompson, you still good with that? Okay. All right, questions?
I have a clarified question. So we're saying now that it's 14 with all of that underfloor, whatever we're talking about. So essentially, the measurement would still be from that bottom stratum up to?
To what you see.
Yeah, so essentially, when we're saying that 18 effectively becomes 12, so then 14 effectively becomes eight?
No, no. The 12 just gets replaced with the 14.
Okay.
And I referenced the Kirby Lane specifically, because floors are done differently. Not everybody has drop ceilings. Some people put their mechanical actually inside the envelope, so this gives flexibility for you to adapt to different things.
Clarifications to the 14-foot, is floor to bottom of structure, or 14-foot or floor?
The 14 to bottom of structure.
So, just to hear from staff, is, is this consistent with what your experts and what your recommendation is, or I'm a little confused since the amendment?
18 feet was actually given to us by the architects themselves. That's not a number that staff came up with, so 14 would be considerably shorter than what
Okay.
AIA architects recommended to, to staff.
All right, I'm gonna pull table this one for the time being. I just got a document from AIA that said 14, so we'll, we'll, we'll figure this one out. All right, moving along. Let's do a couple, two form ones. Fix the cottage court form, number six. Follow the residential working group guidance on cottage courts for RM zones, since that only applied to R zones. Staff, do you have opinion on that? Number six under non-resi, fix the cottage court form?
This will be the last one, Commissioner?
Yeah. Is this, is it materially different than the previous cottage court?
No, in fact, it explicitly says follow whatever the residential group did.
Right, okay.
Great.
Makes sense.
I'm gonna pair this with another really easy one. Don't count overhangs against impervious cover. Incidental overhangs, match non-residential zones to residential zones by not applying incidental overhangs to impervious cover caps.
We don't, Andrea Bates with Watership Protection, we don't recommend that change. We prefer to keep the existing measurement of impervious cover for multifamily and commercial structures, the way it is, recognizing that there is a difference with residential.
All right, I'm gonna pull that one for the time being, just in the interest of time. So just number six.
All right. Number six seems straightforward. Is there a second? Second by Schneider. Are there questions? Speaking for? Speaking against? Let's take a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay, so that motion carries unanimously. It's 11:23. Are we okay with calling it a night?
I can do another one.
Just one.
We can do one more. All right. Compatibility triggers. Compatibility, it says base compatibility on distance from the lot line of any triggering property within compatibility distance, do not consider adjacency with the, the street or alley or across, et cetera. Most of the compatibility in this draft was dropped to 50 or 100 feet. At that point, if you're talking about being across, like, a 60-foot right-of-way or something like that, like, you, you just have, like, the last step down that, that affects you. So this, this does increase compatibility a little bit, but I think based on the general restrictiveness of compatibility, it's just, it's simpler, and I think it's fairer, because it doesn't really matter in terms of your experience if you're, if that 60 feet is across the street, or if it's just across a lot, or you're adjacent to it, or whatever.
I would love to keep moving, but there may be other compatibility motions that we might want to combine this with, and it may take more time.
All right, we can open up that.
Yep.
Can it work?
I don't think that this would not let us take another compatibility motion. This, this is just talking about what triggers compatibility, whether it's adjacency, which is, does now, and it's just saying, no, it's just distant from the triggering property. So there can be other compatibility motions, as long as you're not talking about what triggers compatibility.
Okay, as long as I, I get that commitment. This won't limit other discussions on compatibility.
I will commit.
Yeah.
Commit to that.
I'd like to clarify that today, some compatibility is triggered by adjacency and some is triggered by distance. And we are trying to move away from the compatibility triggered by distance, because there's a lot of unintended consequences. We also don't want compatibility triggered by units across the street, because what we've seen over and over are single-family homes that are, what we've seen in the past several years is single-family homes across the street that are zoned commercial, but are being used by, as residential, literally being demolished in order to not trigger the compatibility. And so we've written compatibility to not let that happen, because compatibility would not trigger, would not be triggered by those properties. Not only, it's not triggered by zone, but we actually want it to be triggered by adjacency, so that compatibility is not triggered by something that's leapfrogged over a, something in between.
I don't think that was your intent, Commissioner Kenny.
I think one of the concerns we had was the ability to create some sort of, like, commercial flag lot, because we've seen this in some of the, I've seen it a couple times here, where the, the small lots, and, you know, the sort of neighborhood tools, I can't remember what they're called, but the small cottage
The infill tools, yeah.
Lots, infill tools. They can create these flag lots. So there's a, you know, a 10-foot commercial flag. So now you're no longer adjacent, and basically you just sort of wiped out compatibility. And so we, we were concerned about that. Whereas, I think right now, you're saying the use, because currently, use is the what triggers compatibility as opposed to zoning. And we're saying zoning triggers compatibility. Zoning's the only thing that triggers it, but it's just distance, rather than adjacency. So you can't do the flag lots or, or anything like that.
I see.
So can we, can we take up compatibility again? Maybe combine them together? And I might even suggest, Donna, that we get a quick refresher on, maybe with some exhibits of what, what you're trying to communicate.
Okay.
Because I don't, I don't think we've seen that, what the current draft compatibility considerations were by staff.
I understand.
Okay. All right, 11:27. I know you guys really want to squeeze in another one, but we're gonna have another one of these tomorrow at 5:00. So we'll see you guys then. It's 11:28. This meeting is adjourned.